Get called to order here. It is 5:36 PM on November 30th, 2021. This is the Monroe County Council Work Session Meeting for the month of November. Welcome, everybody. We've got a big agenda tonight, so we'll move on. Well, let's do a roll call of council members that are present live, and then we'll also do a roll call of council, the council member present virtually. So as I call the roll, please indicate by voice that you are here with us in the NatU Hill Room live. Counselor Hawke?
Here.
Counselor McKim?
Here.
Counselor Wills?
Here.
Counselor Deckard?
Here.
Counselor Munson?
Here.
All right, and Eric Spoonmore is here as well, too. Mr. Iverson?
I'm here.
Is with us virtually. So we're all here and accounted for in our hybrid meeting. This is exciting. We get to do this again. So that's all very good. So now we'll move on to item two, which is adoption of our agenda this evening. Do we have any council members who would like to make changes, modifications, edits to the agenda this evening? And this agenda is posted on the Monroe County Government website. That's what we'll be working off of this year. Seeing no changes to the agenda, it is approved. We'll move on to item three, department updates. Do we have any departments with us who'd like to provide an update this evening? I see Auditor Smith. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. It is a new microphone, so let me get adjusted to it a little bit. It's so good to be back in the NatU Hill Room. As we were looking around, we were noticing how beautiful and crystal clear these monitors are. They're absolutely gorgeous. Your tax dollars at work, and we appreciate that so that we can actually, you know, see what's going on clearly and understand. So it's good to have good sounds, good to have good video. It's nice to see this, what we call the old blue carpet, which I remember helping pick out and call it Indiana Flag Blue, because I went to Paul Hadley Junior High School, who also, Mr. Hadley is the one who made the Indianapolis flag or the Indiana State flag. So I love this color, this carpet, although it's getting old, and I know it's going to be replaced. This room is very important to all of us, and it is good that we could be back together on Eric's last day as president. So I wanted to take a minute to let the nostalgia sink in a little bit, because we do appreciate this county. We appreciate the facilities. We appreciate this beautiful courthouse and all the people who work together to make Monroe County Government happen. It's a pleasure to serve the council as their statutory secretary, but it's even a greater pleasure to serve the community as the auditor of Monroe County and basically the CFO of the county. And that's quite a big job. It's because this year we have adopted a budget in excess of $80 million. That's quite a lot of money, and a throughput of well over $300 million. Now try to wrap your head around that. Throughput means that's what we pass through our bank accounts into our, into the different governments, the township governments, the city governments, the county government. That's a lot of money and a lot of responsibility for myself, the financial director of Monroe County, which is Bree Gregory, sitting right back here, and her staff of county auditors. They're actually quite amazing. With the 2019 addition of the internal auditor position, which I appreciate you guys helping me create, we are much more able to self-correct and find errors before they affect the county's bottom line. And that's clearly what we want to do. In fact, the financial mindset has morphed into a self-check across departments, rather than just one day we discover something or something comes out in an audit. So basically, a self-check across departments. And this includes all departments with the advent of remote claims. So with respect to self-correction, I want to tell you about something we have found, correction calculation error. So we will do a correction on it in our master spreadsheet in the benefits column. You may remember that we made 11th hour changes to salaries, and that, of course, affects every benefit line. But tonight, I just wanted to mention to you that we have, we have a correction that we will have to make. And when you take the negatives and the positives and you add it together, the outcome is around $8,000, $9,000. But anyway, theirs, we found, will be corrected in tandem with any salary changes you make tonight. We will give you an update in the future, not short future, to the extent of any impact and how and when we will make the change and how we'll address it. My department is working closely with Kim, and the fix will basically be the last one using our interactive spreadsheets that you've heard so much about, actually, that you have used quite extensively. And I remember back to when I made the first budget worksheet, I believe it was in 2005. I think the only ones that maybe you were here then was Marty, Jeff, and Cheryl. I'm not sure if you guys were all here in 2005 or not. That was top-of-the-line technology back then. Of course, neither myself nor any of our staff are actually software engineers. So as the budget has gotten more complicated, more, lots of different varieties of income tax, you know, back then we just had the 1%. All these different revenue streams and outgo, all these different outgoes in various departments. We basically had to integrate the spreadsheets until it just become actually cumbersome. Basically, it's not simple spreadsheets anymore. So it is with open arms and excitement that I'm pleased to announce the 2023 budget for the new year will be completed using the LAW Budget Generation Module, officially called the LAW Budget Projection, and we add portal. The port word portal is really not there, but we just think that when it says projection, it kind of leaves off another word. So I'm going to call it the LAW Budget Projection Portal. This super cool software has been proven across Indiana by several county auditors and allows us to concentrate on the data entry. So each department will concentrate on their data entry, and we will, of course, help them. Kim will do the majority of that. And the formula writing and spreadsheet integration will go away. And it is, it's actually quite fascinating to see how we, when I first came here, we did budgets by hand, actually handwritten out on ledger sheets, and now we're going to an integrated software that will integrate with our purchasing and integrate with our expenses and writing our checks and doing our payroll. So we've come full circle in the time that I've been here. Now I won't tell you how old I am, how long I've been here, but I'll tell you, it's still very exciting and kind of, kind of just hip to me that we finally have come full circle and gotten around to having some wonderful software. So we appreciate you purchasing and the commissioners being part of that, purchasing this software. We simply outgrown the simplicity of simple spreadsheets. It will be wonderful to have tried-and-true software that will do real-time what-if scenarios. I know you guys will love this. You'll say, oh, what if we do this or what if we do that? But then, there it is on the screen. There's your answer in real time. So those real-time scenarios will go a long way in helping you make your budget projections and your budget decisions next year and in every future year. So it's kind of, it's kind of, kind of be cool. It's going to be like Christmas with a new toy. To me, it will be anyway. So Kim, along with the financial department, will be trained on the new software in early 2022. We really want to hit the ground rolling. And Kim will in turn work with departments to train their department. So we're going to start with the kind of train the trainers scenario situation. And once Kim becomes a subject expert, then she will be going out to departments or they'll be coming in to her office, and she will be training them. And so it's going to be, it's going to be fun to roll this out, because people were a little kind of taken aback when we started doing the, you know, the remote claims. And I can remember Angie was one of the biggest cheerleaders, and we had so much resistance. It's like they were so afraid that a bill wouldn't get paid or something would happen. And now if we try to take that away from them, I think they would storm my office and beg and demand it back. So it's funny how we move forward and technology changes, and at first we're scared, but then we embrace it, right? So I'm very excited about that. I think it's going to start 2022 off on a positive note. And don't we all need that after, you know, a year and almost three-quarters now of COVID? So I'm very excited to start the new year with something interesting and something exciting and something that's going to make your jobs easier, Kim's jobs easier, and everybody really to focus on what is the flavor and the composite of the budget? What do we really want to do with that money? Instead of worrying about all the little ticks and all the little fixes that we have to do to integrate all these spreadsheets. It kind of takes the, because of the fascination with all that integration, it kind of takes away from what are we telling our community the flavor of this county is with our budget decisions? And that's what I want the council to be able to focus on, the importance of what we're saying to the community are our priorities through the joint voting and the way you speak to the community through that budget. And so it's very exciting. I think 2022 is going to be my favorite year here yet. I'm just super excited about it. And at this point, I would like to turn this over to the financial director of the county, Ms. Bree Gregory, who will be providing a brief update on FEMA, and she might touch on ARPA if you have a question about that. But as always, she is in service to you as you make your financial decisions. So Ms. Gregory, I will invite you up here to take over.
Thank you, Auditor Smith, and welcome, Ms. Gregory. We love seeing Bree at our work session meetings, so welcome back.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having me. It's so nice to be here in person. Just a brief update, you received your revenue report last week, but I have some good news to share. I submitted what I hope to be our final claim for our current FEMA project. So that total submitted for reimbursement is $485,395.99. We've only received $44,721.48 to date, so that will be a good amount of money coming hopefully early next year. They're currently auditing and reviewing, so I haven't closed out the project yet, but I hope to do so soon. And I'll let you know. I'll keep you updated as I hear things on that. Another piece of good news is they've extended the FEMA grant deadline. So because the pandemic is ongoing, we have a new opportunity, another opportunity, to submit a new project, which I feel like we should take full advantage of. We still have expenses meeting the criteria. So I'm going to get with Ms. Purdy in the next couple of weeks, and we're going to kind of plan a little bit on that. So anyhow, any questions?
Good example of county government teamwork. Yeah, let's see if we have any, any questions on either of these updates. And thanks to Auditor Smith for bringing that to our attention and also for bringing that to my attention earlier, very expeditiously. I wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that, even though it was relatively minor. And I think it's a great thing that we'll be utilizing that more sophisticated technology that will allow us, the council, to have more productive budget discussions going forward. So thank you very much. Any questions for Auditor Smith or Ms. Gregory? None? Okay. Well, thank you so much for the update. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Commissioners Administrator Angie Purdy is approaching the podium, I see. Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Good evening. This is kind of surreal to be here. This is very nice. So I am here at the bequest of the Criminal Justice Response Committee. And for your sake and the public's sake, just to recap, this committee was born from the criminal justice reports that you all received and the commissioners received earlier this year. Those reports provided a plethora of proposed intercepts, changes, general recommendations to facilitate general overall community care and public safety. The CJRC focus is comprised of members of the Board of Commissioners and this council, and they are initially focusing on the community resources necessary to divert individuals from the criminal justice system or transition individuals once released from the criminal justice system. And that is all based on the sequential intercept model. The CJRC recognized early the need for a coordinator. And that was a coordinator that was not currently on staff, as staff is rather taxed at the moment. They have completed that proposed scope of work or job description. However, this would be a contractual role, and it is for the position to serve as a coordinator for this very important committee. So I'm just bringing this to you and the public's attention. The scope is going to be posted for applicants to run through the holidays. The committee recognized that funding for this contract is subject to council appropriation and approval. So I, myself, or someone from CJRC will be coming to you guys sometime in the future to talk about funding, funding sources, details of the job, and any other questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Purdy. Let's see if we have, do we have any questions from council? What's up, Dave? Yes, Mr. McKim?
I guess just, sorry, just to comment, this seems like, I mean, I think this is, this is a good idea and very important. It strikes me that ARPA would be an appropriate funding source for this. I know there are others as well. But given that I, you know, we have already declared that this is, it seemed like this was a priority, both for the commissioners and the council in this whole process for ARPA funding. I would hope that that would at least be high on the, on the list of considered funding sources.
Most definitely. It's actually already in the policy that's subject to modification as it's a living, breathing document. But I brought it just in case this was addressed, because one of the priorities that was indicated was the funding as it relates to community gaps demonstrated in our criminal justice study recently conducted by the county. So this will fit directly in there. I've always checked with legal, and they agreed that that also would not be a problem.
Any other questions or comments, council? Right. Well, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Iverson.
That's okay. That takes a while to get this technology correct. I just wanted to lend my voice of support to the project, and I'm very proud to be sitting on this committee. And I just wanted to quickly go over that. There are four deliverables that will be asking for this position to deliver. And I'll go over these very briefly, but the first is to approach all work with a demonstrated consideration of equity, diversity, and inclusion. As you know, that's very important to this work. Second, to facilitate group process, that is in the community, to identify priorities. Third is to make recommendations for implementation. And fourth is to look beyond our borders to research similar successful and unsuccessful projects and present those back to the body. So this is a well-thought-out process, and I'm very excited to see this through.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Any further discussion or comments from council? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Purdy, for the update. Do we have any other departments who wish to provide updates to the council this evening?
I just, I just wanted to ask if you would email me what you just, thank you.
Any other department updates? If so, virtually, please raise your hand. Doesn't appear that we have any. So we'll conclude item three and now move on to item four with our legal department.
Council, I move to approve ordinance 2021-54, an ordinance of Monroe County Council authorizing issuance of the Monroe County Indiana Economic Development Tax Income Revenue Bonds, Series 2021, which can be found in the council packet. This ordinance was read into the record at the November 9th, 2021 regular session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, who we have presented, it looks like Mr. Cockrell and Ms. Rice is here as well, too, listed on the agenda at least. So feel free to start whenever you're ready, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and I just note for our people following at home that it's on page 85 of the packet. That way, it's helpful. The other items included in the packet are things that are referenced in the, in the ordinance itself, the trust indentures and things like that. But what we're looking at is a project that's been in our State Road 46 corridor TIF district since its inception is the completion of Curry Pike to Arlington Road, covering what is currently the Hunter Valley Road and a bridge over the creek there. What this is is similar to the past bonds we've had in the State Road 46 TIF district, and that is a developer-backed bond. And when I say that, that means that the county is only obligated and only pledging TIF revenue towards this. This has gone through the Economic Development Commission as well as the Redevelopment Commission, and the Redevelopment Commission has pledged to TIF, and the Economic Development Commission has recommended approval of this, of this item following a public hearing. I guess that is the meat of it. If you have any questions about any, any part of it, I'm more than happy to answer it. But essentially, this is a, a bond that is to pay for the extension of Curry Pike to Arlington. And that that's been an important project for the TIF district for quite some time.
All right, very good. Anything further, Ms. Rice? Or does that cover it all? Okay. Got it. Let's see if we have any questions or discussion from council. Mr. McKim?
Yes, I know that this, the subject of a residential TIF has been discussed in that area. And so I know that there's no, there's not been any actual concrete progress on it, but it has been discussed. I mean, this TIF that, the TIF revenue that's been pledged is essentially is for non-residential property, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So how would, if at all, how would the existence of this bond potentially affect the creation of residential TIF if we decided to, if the county decided to move in that direction?
Well, and we've discussed it with the developer in this case. And the developer has, understands that there may be a residential TIF going into place of the current TIF. And it's actually fairly, I know, excited is not the right word, but supportive and wanting to do that. There's a second road project that we're looking at for the future that would, would be important if we were going to do a residential TIF or for residential portions of that area. It's in the North Park PUD, which is quite a complex document that has a lot of different uses in it. And so currently in that PUD, a portion is designated for residential.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, yes, Ms. Munson?
Yes, Mr. Cockrell, would you please mention the amount not to exceed for this bond so that the public knows what we're talking about?
The amount not to exceed for this bond is 4.5 million. When we did the financial analysis, I think with the current revenues, it would support a $3.1 million TIF, so that developer backing is quite critical to this going forward.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Hawke?
Yes, this is, of course, exciting to hear and also very interesting to hear the development of what might be a residential TIF in that area. And I understand you have to split out Richland Township from the total TIF, because they have such growth that they're not going to be allowed to be in that portion. So how then will that affect the term, the length of the entire TIF there? That we're talking about, will that extend that life of the TIF?
This bond does not extend the life of the TIF. If that TIF, if, if, if the discussion carries forward and it's determined that that is a prudent course of action to carve out the, a TIF district where the current district is, similar to what we did with the former GE site, then that is, that, that could potentially extend the life of the TIF and likely would in order to get increment to, to produce enough infrastructure to incentivize the development. But this action tonight does not extend the current TIF or does anything that would. And you are correct that the residential TIF, when we looked at the new housing numbers, the new housing numbers in the Richland Township, because that's how state code organizes it and makes you review it, they are in, they are over the amount that you, they are over the limit that you can have and still do a residential TIF in that township.
Any follow-up? Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment. And I, I don't know. There's a...
We have one. We have one virtual public comment, Jim Shelton.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you. Good evening. Jim Shelton, speaking on behalf of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and as a member of the county's redevelopment commission, I urge you to approve this. It will make this area much more open to development and will hopefully be the next step toward what we hope will be a residential TIF out there that will help with the housing that we need so badly. So please approve this. There's no risk to the county at all. It's exactly like the bond that was just paid off at the end of, well, the first part of this year that went for, I guess, what, 20 years? The developer will pay the difference between the increment that the TIF develops and the bond payments. So there's no risk to the county at all. We urge you to approve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, for your comments. Do we have any further public comment on this item?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, great. Seeing none, Ms. Miller, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wills?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, that will conclude item four. Thank you. And we'll now move on to item five. And that will be with council office.
Council, I move to approve ordinance 2021-55, revised job descriptions for Monroe County employees and to simultaneously amend the 2022 salary ordinance with the revised job position titles and classifications.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have county attorney Margie Rice joining us, as well as council administrator Kim Shell, that will introduce some of this information for us here at the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to tag team on items A, B, C, and D. Switch back and forth. I'm going to lead with A and let you know the ordinance that is in front of you, 2021-55, if adopted, would formally approve all the revised job descriptions that Wagner Erwin Shealy developed over the last year and a half. So it is a simple ordinance, but it will be really momentous if you adopt it. As you know, you've spent a lot of time, a lot of money. Kim has dedicated a lot of time. All of our department heads have been involved in this project. And so it's really the culmination of this, of this large project to update and review all of the job descriptions and the classifications. There are, it will impact the salary ordinance, which we're also asking you a little bit later to approve the 2022 salary ordinance grids. Last time we did this, and Kathy Smith was here, I was the county attorney at the time. We did a comprehensive review, and it was never implemented. So the fact that you guys have this on the table tonight to fully implement, with one exception, and that's simply because there was a job description that was rewritten, and we're still in the process of figuring out whether that needed to be rewritten or we should stick with the status quo. But the fact that you guys have this on your agenda is a huge deal. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Kim, Kathy may want to talk about it as well. And then, you know, we'll get to you guys for your comments. And again, ask us any questions, because this started in August of 2020, and here it is December, nearly December of 2021. So it's, it's spanned quite some time, and you guys may have questions.
And I believe Margie has covered everything with regards to the job descriptions and the, and the classifications.
Okay. Auditor Smith, any, anything on your end?
I just want to say that although hundreds of hours were spent this year on this project, I want to point out that thousands of hours were spent the first time that we did this. It really took a year. It was very excruciatingly painful situation, because we didn't have uniform job descriptions at that time. This time, they started out with uniform job descriptions, so the only thing that, all that expense and all that time we invested all those years ago was just base, base job descriptions for this time. So now we've spent a lot of taxpayer money creating a project that can work. And so I fully support this. I fully support moving ahead. I know there are questions that we have outside of this, like, well, we'll just pick one. I know there are questions that we have outside of this, like, well, we'll just pick one, longevity. However, until we get the base project and we go ahead and say, yes, this is the model that we purchased. This is the model we worked really hard on and we have confidence in this model. We're just not going to move forward. So I ask you to vote, vote for this, move it forward, honor the work that, that we put into years ago and the work that was put into in the last 18 months. It's very important and we will never move forward without a really well-thought-out and well-documented and well-up-kept personnel policy.
And I want to also point out that state law specifically requires in a county that the county council is responsible for describing the jobs, naming the jobs, classifying them, determining the salaries. So for those people who may not be familiar with county government, this is something that is solely within the council's authority. And, and in order to really have integrity with the system, it needs to be maintained. So we will be getting to a part of the agenda about a maintenance of the system. But the first step is for you to consider the adoption of these revised job descriptions and classifications.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that. I know we're all very familiar with this. There's been a ton of work, a tremendous amount of time and work invested into this process and it's really important. And so let's, let's see if council members would like to ask any additional questions or if there's further discussion that we have, which I imagine there will be prior to voting on it. Do we have any council members who'd like to ask questions at this point? Yes, Mr. McKim?
Yeah, and actually this may be more germane to the maintenance procedure, but I think it's also germane to this, who specifically or what position is going to be the custodian of the, of the master copy of the job description? As you know, this has been one of the issues we've had in the past, that there are just, there are mysterious multiple copies of, multiple editions of job descriptions floating around and nobody can quite figure out which is the authoritative source, so.
I'll answer that. As we get to the maintenance plan that is designated in that maintenance plan and it will be the council administrator, that will be the keeper, the gatekeeper for the job descriptions.
Thank you very much.
And those, well, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later, the specifics on that. Thank you for that question, Mr. McKim. Ms. Hawke?
Yes, and I'm not sure at what point would be the most appropriate time to discuss this. But as you know, I did not want to move forward with this at the time and make it permanent until we had a financial update from our financial advisor that we were paying to do this. I will have to say that I was disappointed in the response that we got. We, well, you know, I was disappointed that we got it right in time for Thanksgiving. So that didn't make me feel happy. But also what I was looking for in that, which I thought we were going to get, was something that said, here's, here's the steps that you will need to take if indeed the annexation would go through. Now, we know that even if the annexation goes through, we don't see that big change for a few years. But that doesn't mean that the county council should wait until that time to make any adjustments. So I was hoping to see the advice of, you know, try to, when we looked at if we were going to have to make reductions, if we would do it through attrition or combining job descriptions, I didn't see that in the report. The only thing it mentioned was, well, this income tax will change if the annexation goes through. Well, we already missed that. So I will say I was disappointed that, that will not stop me from supporting our county employees. But I just wanted to make certain that people understand that that would have been a big part of how we move forward and we don't have that information. So the, the council will have a big job on their hands if this annexation goes through because, folks, you cannot wait until we have, until we're up against it to be able to make corrections.
Thank you, Ms. Hawke. Mr. McKim?
Unless anybody else wants to go first.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I did want to address the, the issue of the financial report. And, you know, I, I think the, the one thing that the financial report was, I actually found extremely useful. One thing that was particularly useful though was the pointing out that the LIT reduction would take place for budget year 2027. And I can't imagine any financial advisor that would try to give us detailed advice about a shift in a billion or so, over a million dollars that might, might happen in, in, in that many years. So I guess I don't see that as particularly unreasonable that that wasn't part of it. And I'm certainly, I have absolutely no desire to penalize, you know, today's employees or to make it harder for Monroe County to recruit and retain the best employees because of something that, that will happen in, in 2027. I guess that's, you know, so I'm certainly supporting moving forward on this, recognizing that once we know the full scope of the annexation, we don't even know what, what area, what remonstrances are going to be successful, whether there's any, any follow-on litigation. I think there's still so many unknowns on that that I just, I don't think it would be prudent or fair to try to, you know, make us less competitive as, as an employer right now.
Could I make that clear? I do not believe that we should make our current employees suffer whatsoever. What I am saying, I think we have to have a plan moving forward if indeed the annexation goes through. And I know that young people, such as you, think that it's going to be a long time before to, for that year hit you. But it goes pretty fast. I've seen that happen in county government. Boy, it's time we have to save for that next presidential election and so forth. So those are things that, long-term, financial planning, it cannot just be for two years. But all that being said, I want to make sure that our county employees are treated fairly. The inflation that we've seen, it's rampant. And if our county employees can't even afford to pay their rent and put gas in their car to come to work, what, is that really the way we want to treat our county employees? And I just say that's not correct, that's not what we should do. And we just have to step up to the plate and make this happen. But we have to remember, at the same time, the taxpayers who are actually paying this money, they're also looking at inflation and high gas taxes and high food costs and so forth. So it is something that we have to be cognizant of and recognize, these folks, we need to take a look at everybody. I appreciate you having, letting me have my say.
Oh, thank, thank you, Ms. Hawke. Let me check with council first and then we'll go to the sidebar. Any questions, comments? Yeah, Mr. Duckard?
Thank you very much. And I know that we've got several items on here related to this package. And I don't have a question. I just generally have a comment that I think it is phenomenally great how much effort has gone into this. And I'm looking over in this direction because I know that this entire bench, not to mention other counselors, have really labored on this effort for many months, not, not to mention the consultants that we brought in. And I'm glad to see us doing this and responding, responding to a consultant's report because that's not something that you always see come to fruition. There's always a reason not to, to, to follow through, to be uncomfortable and so excited about that. I know that many people have heard me say over and over about the, the maintenance end of this so that we're not in that cyclical history of, well, here's another, what, 16 years on average? And we didn't do this right and should it? We really, when we think about the requirements on local government and what is not going to get any easier, you know, in 16 years, the demands on public service are only going to get more fundamentally difficult and expansive. We really, on this council's end with these job descriptions, we really have to do our level best to make sure that we're supporting the departments and the employees in a way that, that make things happen in, in such a positive way. Because again, it comes down to what they do. This council supports them. So I'm very excited to see this come to this moment and it's good to be in this room to do it, to be honest with you. It's, it's neat to see that cycle kind of wrap around.
Thank you, Mr. Duckard. Ms. Hawke?
Oh, turn your mic on.
I think we would be remiss if we didn't remind ourselves and others. On the report from FSG, they did mention at some, the funds that would be reduced too far. And what, who wants to report on which those, which funds those are? It showed in the FSG report which funds.
What, we don't have that available tonight because we weren't expecting to speak regarding FSG, so.
I thought we were going to have someone from FSG here. Okay, well, at least we, in the report, it says that there are going to be some funds that will be spent down by, what was it, 2024? And so I think we've got, we have to look at those funds and the salaries paid in that and make adjustments on that. And that wasn't tied to annexation. It was just bending down the funds. And so it's been a while since, I mean, I've read it and read that big old report, but I don't remember which fund it was.
Mr. McKim, go ahead.
Yeah, I can actually address the specifics. The, the two, the two funds that were mentioned in that context were the PS LIT and the E911 Fund. And it's all related. And actually Angie and I have been kind of looking into, into that situation. And, you know, one of, one of the issues that's, that's happened, I think, is that the E911 Fund has been taking more of a burden of the cost of PSAP than the PSAP LIT Fund. And it looks like the PSAP LIT Fund has actually accumulated a bit of a surplus, both on the county side and on the city side. And on the city side, of course, that has to then be spent for the, for capital items. But on the county side, I think what we need to do is, I think now that we've come to a much, thanks primarily to Ms. Purdy's efforts here, come to a much greater understanding of exactly how the funds are flowing through these, these, these funds, that now we can make sure that we fully utilize the PSAP LIT funds and then therefore reduce the, that are already there in the surplus and therefore reduce in future years the tax rate that's associated with that, which then allows more of that tax to go to the PS. So they're kind of all, they're all linked together, PS LIT, PSAP LIT, and E911. And it's not so much a matter of out-of-control salaries as I think we've, we just, we have not had a good enough grip on exactly, you know, just with, with, in dealing with the city, exactly where the reversions lie after the budget, so.
Absolutely. And when you look at the agreement with the city, if there should ever be a shortfall, we have to split, and split that 50/50 with the city, regardless if the city will be pulling in a whole lot more money than we will. We still have to split it 50/50. And I would like to remind the council that we do not have to go ahead and budget the entire amount of revenue because anything that is not budgeted, then that will come back in, in being that holding area that the county is responsible for that could then assist with any shortfall. So I think we need to make sure that we don't just budget the entire amount because when they, they don't show us like a, a financial statement showing this is how much they still have in their operating balance. And, you know, we've talked about that. So I think that is an important part of making sure that, that PS LIT, Douglas, gets spent down too far. But also, we, the council, have put a lot of things in that PS LIT that it really was not originally intended to be used for in order to try to make budgets work. And I think we absolutely must stop doing that because it's, it's not going to be sustainable to continue to do that.
Well, again, that, that assumes that the 11% reduction or the 11% increase in the PSAP LIT rate is a permanent shift, which is not necessarily...
So we never know.
In any case, that's my understanding of those, those three funds.
And, and just for everyone's information, we are working on having a brief meeting with Mr. Garretos on Friday. And I believe we are having them come in December to give a good presentation to everyone with regards because there's a lot of information that needs to be gone over. So right now, that's the tentative date.
All right, I see Mr. Iverson's hand is up.
Yeah, I, I simply wanted to bring us back to the task at hand in a more general way and express my support for this. I think a lot of the, the comments that we've been talking about express this as a support of our, our staff. And I think I want to broaden that a little bit and, and recognize that this is about the modernization of public government and it's the way forward that we are continuing not to become slack and, and to, not to shrink, but to grow and to continue to make sure that our employees are being, having job descriptions that are meeting with what they're working on, but also so that it's competitive with other sectors of the economy. And I think that's really important for, uh, local government to be doing. And that's why I'm supporting this. It's, it's just the right thing to do and I think it's the right thing to do right now.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Ms. Munson?
I wanted to add my support and to say that we learned that there were more problems with the job descriptions than we had ever realized once we started this process. And our consultants did an excellent job because our staff worked closely with the consultants to make sure everything was kept on track. And I think this is not a simple consultant's report provided to the county for, for a fee. It was, it really was a very collaborative effort and I am pleased to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Yes, Ms. Wills?
I also wholeheartedly support the approval of these job descriptions. And I think to Councillor Iverson's point, this really is a modernization of our structure and, and function of county government. And I'm excited that we're putting a process in place that is meant to support our departments and all of our personnel within those departments. And I hope that when we get to the maintenance, it will become clear that that is the intent. The intent is a supportive role. I know that Ms. Rice has, has said many times that it is our responsibility, it's statutorily required that we maintain a level of control over job descriptions and, and the related things that go with that. But I also think it's very important that as we're exercising that control, we are doing it in a way that supports what we know our departments want and what they've expressed that they need. That's all I've got to say for that, but.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. And I, I too, I truly think this is momentous for Monroe County government. And I just want to thank all of the people that have been involved in this very ongoing, long and ongoing process. It's been a lot of work and we committed a lot of time and resources in doing this. And I fully support this outcome. And for me personally, you know, this is delivering on a promise that I made in this room nearly six years ago to the day in a caucus when I ran for this office. And we recognized back then that this was one of the biggest threats. And I know other members of council at that point did too. And I know other members of council at that point did too. And that the compensation of county employees at the level that it was, was one of the biggest threats in my mind, the county government at that time. So I've been working over these last six years to make incremental progress here. And I think this is just a great example of being able to deliver on that. And so, you know, there's some things that we're going to have to think about. This is a huge, massive investment in our people. And the county and and future councils are going to have to think about, you know, things like our system of longevity. Right now, we've got essentially two different types of systems that pay longevity. You know, I would like to, of course, my opinion doesn't really matter as much at this point, but hopefully, future councils will recognize that it would be worthwhile to explore how we pay out longevity and try to get to one system. I think the future of Monroe County, that would be good for them. We're going to have to be very vigilant with new hires going forward too. You know, we know that those are, it's expensive to hire people. And so we're making these investments now, and we need to be absolutely certain that any new hire going forward in the near term is going to be absolutely essential to meeting the mission of county government. And it's also, I think, indicates that, you know, we really need to be making those important investments in economic development. When we do that and we make smart investments there, that's a way that we can mitigate any potential losses of revenue from other areas or other threats that that may come down the road. So I know that the council is up to the task, but and and I just appreciate that everybody is on board with this. And it's very meaningful to me to be able to do this tonight. So thank you, everybody. I know Otter Smith had some some comments as well, too.
I mean, why, I want to explain what happened the first time and why WIS wasn't implemented when it should have been the first time. The Kern and Shepherd Report scared county government and counties across the state of Indiana. Mitch Daniels' property tax restructuring program took the took the welfare departments off the county rolls and restructured the schools and really shook everything up. The county council at that time was concerned about the 1% and 2% tax caps, and would we be able to fund it if we adopted it? And at that time, it was 2006, I was asked repeatedly by the council, could we fund it? And I said, we will not see those tax tax cap impact us until 2011. I remember Jeff McKim was doing, he said, how do you know 2011? And I told Jeff, math doesn't lie, math doesn't lie, okay? And during that time, what happened was the the AV of the county went up, up, up. And so when 2011 got here, what I was expecting, it was much more minimal than that. So so what happened is, we missed the opportunity for investment in the retention of a talented workforce. We lost lawyers and planners and deputies. We lost all these talented individuals that had workplace knowledge, that had institutional knowledge. And and I think it reflected on the council, and some people really thought the council didn't care. Of course, they cared. They they wanted to adopt it. They were just concerned about the finances. The what's happened now with ARPA and what's happened with having a basically a workforce here who is well paid in this county has prevented that from happening. And this report from FSG, even the preliminary report, shows that we can fund this. The time is now for the council to act on their wishes and support the employees. It's it's a vote of confidence in employees, and it's a vote of confidence in our county government. And so I would appreciate it if you would vote positive on this and show the employees how important they are to the to the leadership of Monroe County Government.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other comments or questions from council? If not, we'll see if there's any public comment, and TSD could let us know.
Just want to make one comment, because this is an ordinance, as we all know. If it, if we get unanimous support tonight on the first vote, it passes. If we do not get unanimous support tonight, it will require a second.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, do we have any public comment? TSD, could you confirm if we have any, if we have no hands raised?
We have comment, we have comment from Eric Schmitz.
Okay, Mr. Schmitz, welcome.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the work that has been done going into this. I I think it's, I think it's great that it's happening that that is, that that a solution has has gotten to where we're, you know, we're we're seconds from from voting on it, minutes from voting on it. I fully support this. You know, I'm, I am in an office where I I'm there every day for the most part. There, the people who work in my office are there every day diligently. So I see this, and they, you know, they've earned this, they they deserve this. And that's, you know, I I realize that, that, you know, elected folks get get a get a bump, a bit of a bump too. That I found that out today, that it that never, that never mattered. The the thing that is most important to me is that we treat our people right, because they've put in the effort, they've paid the dues. And and, you know, we we need to, we need to make it clear in a in a material and substantial way that that they are not just important, they're they're beyond, they're they're vital. They're precious to us. And I, and so I I really, I really hope that you pass this best if it if it's on one vote. I I really hope to see that. So thank you, thank you very much for for the effort that's been put in. And and yeah, please get this done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Monroe County Recorder Eric Schmitz. Any further public comment?
There is another, there's two more departments.
Okay, great. And Ms. Ridge, welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Live.
Yes, I am at the IACC conference this for a couple days. So first of all, I want to thank all the hard work that's gone into the council, the consultant that you hired, the staff that you have to undertake this huge task. As you know, I've been there since the first round of the WIS. And doing this, I know it was a huge undertaking, but it really does show how much you appreciate your county employees. We've had a huge turnover over the last few years. A lot of it, yeah, to COVID, a lot of it to pay, seeking jobs elsewhere for better pay. I think this shows appreciation for the county employees and your commitment to the county employees. And I cannot applaud you enough for putting county employees first in 2022. With that said, I just want to leave this on a high note that back in 2018, I received the Highway Director of the Year Award for in AIC. And today, Toby Turner, your Highway Superintendent, received the Superintendent of the Year for the Association of County Commissioners. So you have great people that work for you from admin to department heads, to elected officials, to union employees, to deputies. It's across the board. You have, I work with great people in every department. And to show the appreciation that you guys are showing to the departments is much applauded. So thank you, and I hope you support this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. And what a terrific honor for Mr. Turner. Thank you for sharing that great news, a a great award for Monroe County Government. So thank you so much. All right, and Commissioner Thomas, welcome.
Hello, good evening. I just want to say thank you for working on this. I know it took a lot of time, but indeed, our best asset is our county employees. And we appreciate each and every one of them, every task that they do, and this demonstrates that. So thank you for considering this.
Thank you for your comments. And do we have any further public comments? Yes, Ms. Cottle, Health Administrator, welcome.
Hi, it is sure hard to follow the the comments that have come before me, especially from Ms. Ridge. Congratulations to Toby, and I I would echo all of them and say thank you again. Certainly fully support this. We've seen challenges in attracting and securing the best staff and keeping them, right? And we do, I I agree, we have wonderful staff, and this will be a great way to show their appreciation. I do know that we have some, you know, there's continued work to do and and tweaking on some job descriptions in the future and systems around that. There isn't anything with this big of undertaking that gets everything right in one fell swoop, but this has been an enormous task. And I think the council for taking it and for showing the appreciation to the staff. Again, the Health Department, the whole county has wonderful staff, and they deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle, for your comments. And Commissioner Givens, Penny Givens, welcome.
Yeah, hi. I hope you all will support this on the first reading as well. I cannot imagine what our roads would look like without Lisa and Toby, and I cannot imagine getting through this pandemic without Penny Cottle and her amazing, amazing staff. So as we think about the things that surround us, the things that county employees do, please support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Givens. Any further comments, any further public comment? All right, well, seeing none, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Ms. Miller?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, so that will conclude item 5A. We'll now move on to item 5B.
Counsel? Make sure I'm on the right one. Yes, counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval, the 2022 Salary Ordinance Compensation Grid.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. And Ms. Shell, did you have some information you'd like to share with us before we get started on this?
Yes, I would. When we put the packet together, the initial WIS recommended grid had the elected officials at 2%. And that's what we had discussed. And then when we were working on other grids and looking at other scenarios, I was asked to tie elected officials to the grid. I have prepared a salary ordinance grid with that information, and I would like to share that with you tonight, if possible.
Okay.
Because that particular grid was not included in the packet. But I did share it with you guys earlier today, but I wanted to make it public, you know, for tonight's meeting with regards to, so the public would know what was going on. So quickly, what you can see here on the screen, and I'll see if I can get it. All right, what what I would like for you to notice is, and I I know it's really hard to see. Oops, sorry about that. The elected officials are currently here at these rates for 2021. The external WIS amounts and ranges are listed here on the left. So when we proposed the, originally, the elected officials were here in the bright green, and that's what with the 2%. What I would like to recommend is tying these salaries to the grid itself. And with the recommendations that I've received from council members, the the levels here show what, where they would be on the grid, which would be this section right here, and how that they would fit. This scenario goes with how they're structured right now with the auditor and the clerk staying even. And then with the assessor, recorder, and treasurer being on the same grids. And then I've kind of, with the recommendations from council members, placed the coroner, commissioners, council, and surveyor on there as well. Council recommended or asked to be put at a 3% for the council's staff, it's our council members. What I'm recommending for the council is this right here, which is on the grid, but if you take half, that gives you approximately just a little over the 3%, which is $161 annually. But that gives you close to that, but that ties everyone rather than having the council be a percentage where everybody else is, you know, to the grid. So the sheriff, his salary is, you know, set by the state because of the contract that we have with him. So his, his salary is tied to the state full-time prosecutor salary. So that's where that amount comes from. So we receive that from the state. Well, and and let me clarify that, you do have a little bit of say, there's a little bit of room within the sheriff's salary, but that's where you set it. Right. So you could, you could give a lower salary to the sheriff, but you chose not to. Right.
Okay.
So do you have any questions with regards to this information?
Yeah, let's, let's do a round here of questions first. Let's see if we have any questions. Council members, are there any questions on any of the information that Michelle has presented to us? Yes, Mr. Kim?
Well, okay, this is, this is more just procedural, so that actually the the motion that was read under the, under the floor includes the 2% increase for the elected officials, not.
I was gonna say, I think it, I just put the motion at, or, you know, proposed it with Kate as a compensation grid. So there were three grids in the packet. There's a, the WIS increase, which I call the original. Then there was a WIS increase with a 2%. And then there was a WIS increase with a 50 cent. So you just need to clarify which one you want. This one would be the WIS original with EOs tied to the grids. So this would be like the fourth one.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we have to take a, an action on the floor here to make sure if we want to.
Correct, yes.
That makes sense, thanks.
Ms. Hawke?
Okay, so the 2% is off. I mean, we're not going to be giving this, and.
Right, instead of the 2%, they would be tied to the grid. Okay, just. It's not in addition to.
I just wanted to make certain of that. Hurts so many different scenarios. It's like every day by noon that you have a new one to look at.
Just to be clear, it is not, what's being proposed in pink is not the WIS recommendation.
No.
No, it is the WIS recommendation. It's the straight, it's the original. It's the original WIS in increase. But the council with the original wanted the elected officials at 2%. Yeah. So that, so that grid is what is in the packet. This is the WIS original for everybody else. For everybody else, but I'm talking about for the elected officials. This would tie them to the grid.
WIS, WIS never provided any recommendations on compensation for elected officials. They just did some research, market research, and provided us that information. Kim worked with council leadership. Kim worked with council leadership to come up with what we're seeing here that is tied to that grid that WIS put in, recommended for employees, non-elected officials.
So original WIS recommendation for everybody but the elected officials, which was not included in the WIS. Correct, you'll be looking at the pink.
That's the official title of this.
Right.
Okay, who's Ms. Munson?
Yes, I would like to be able to please clarify what color column that we are looking.
Turn your mic on. Okay, it's the pink column or the, the orange, pink.
Yeah.
Okay.
Column T.
Yes, G and H.
G and H, I, hmm, I don't know why I don't have anything in H that I, in my file. I don't.
Colors are hard things.
Maybe I have an old one.
I, they're different colors even on the different monitors, so it's hard.
Yeah. I don't have H.
Well, now see, I, that's what I'm saying, I just sent this information this afternoon to you, so if you're looking at an older one, so. Can I keep?
No, I, I agree, H is not on what was put in the Dropbox. I, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
It, all that, right, the, the actual tie into the grid is not in.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
The numbers are the same, but, but the grid tie-in is.
Oh, okay, I apologize for that. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Iverson, did you have a question?
Yeah, a point, if members of the council could speak into their microphones and make sure they're on, it's really hard to hear on Zoom the questions, so thank you. My question was, have any of the elected officials or departments had, I guess is the case maybe, been given this information, whether it's the 2% or the link to grid?
The information with regards to 2% was sent out to everyone earlier in this process, not just in the packet, but it was provided earlier. The, the latest classification with the, with everyone being linked to the grid has not. That was just something that I've worked with the council leadership with earlier today.
Okay, it's been an ongoing process.
But the, if you, if you go with the linked proposal, there is an increase for everyone across the board.
Do you have a question, Ms. Hawke?
Turn your mic on.
I just, I just have a question, not even particularly about, about this. I just wanted to make sure that and I'd asked this question earlier, that everyone will receive some kind of a raise, even if they are at the top of their classification, they will receive some raise.
Um, everyone except for a handful of sheriff deputies, and we knew that going in, WIS mentioned that in their presentation, that the sheriff deputies have, had received increases several times with their contract updates. We have several, and I want to say maybe around 10-ish sheriff deputies that are going to have to be outliers because they are currently making more than what the WIS grids propose. And my understanding from their union rep was they were fine with that, with staying as outliers. So they didn't have a problem.
That was my understanding as well, too. We, we had discussed that with them and certainly brought it to their attention. And I believe they took it back to their union and it was reviewed and the information was shared with us that it was okay.
Yeah, we, I, and I did that as well with the highway and the grids with the highway. We got that worked out, the, and everyone, the union reps were all approving of the WIS grids.
And the, the, the last big increase, I believe, that the sheriff's deputies got was last year, right? So they kind of got a down payment on this.
Yeah.
Before everybody else did.
Yes.
And we, we recognized that, we knew that that was part of it.
Yes, they received an increase in December of 2020.
Right, right.
And so, which kicked them up. And so that was also taken into consideration. So that's why we do have a few that are going to be outliers.
Yep, Ms. McKem.
And just to follow up on that, I mean, that the increase that we gave the mayor deputies last year was specifically tied to an external midpoint as well. So it's not surprising that, that when WIS does an external midpoint, they don't show us being significantly behind that other external midpoint that we already, that we already hit.
Yeah, and, and they even said in their summary report that they presented to us that, you know, they were pleasantly surprised that the deputies were almost on target.
Yes, Ms. Smith.
Yes, if you look at the median analysis, the proposed pink numbers are much less than that, substantially less than that. However, we're in the top 10 counties in size. We're the most complex, besides Marion County, most complex court system because we don't have city courts. It makes, I know for my department, it's, it's, it's a lot, it's a huge financial management situation. And so, so these grids to me are very fair, they're very fair on the low side because they, they're not, they don't even hit the median and now there's quite a bit of difference. But in addition to that, it more right sizes it with our employees so that our employees don't make substantially more than the elected officials make.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Yes.
I guess I'd like to just make a motion just to clarify what we're, what we're actually voting on. So, so council, I move, we amend the motion on the floor to ensure that we are voting on the original WIS numbers plus the EOs tied to the grid.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Do we have any comment?
Is that?
That is correct.
Any questions on Ms. McKem's motion? All right, do we have any public comment on the motion?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Councilor McKem.
Yes.
Councilor Duckard.
Yes.
Councilor Hawke.
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore.
Yes.
Councilor Iverson.
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, we'll return now to the underlying motion.
I would like to state, because we do have several departments online, I will be distributing the new grids out to everyone tomorrow because we need, they will need that information for the upcoming payroll changes. So not to worry, that will be out.
Very good. Okay, any, any further comments, questions from council before we do public comment on this? All right, we'll see if there's any public comment now.
Only from Councilor Iverson.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Not public, we'll go back to council.
I mean, I, I can wait for public comment.
No, go ahead.
There is no public comment.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Ms. Iverson.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. President. You know, as I was considering this vote, you know, a lot of things really stuck in my mind. You know, one of the things that's happening is that, you know, eviction protections are lapsing in our community. Unemployment insurance is lapsing and there's a lot of households out there really hurting. As, as we know, you know, our poverty rate in Mineral County is really high. As of the 2019 ACS estimates, is 23.5% of our population. And of course, there's, you know, a lot of debate around that. However, it seems to me that talking about giving elected officials a, a big salary increase flies in the face of what's happening in our economy. However, as I look at the numbers, two things strike me. And the first is, is that even with the increased numbers, most of the annual salaries are below the mean income for our county. And the second thing that strikes me is that this is certainly a recommendation from WIS. And I think that's something that we need to be taking really cautious, be cautious about is, is making sure that we're adopting WIS guidelines here whenever we can. So I will be voting in favor of this. And I'm, I'm very happy to make sure that our employees are getting due compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Okay, now we'll go to public comment. It looks like we've got two of our county commissioners who would like to provide public comment. Mr. Thomas, I saw your hand first. Welcome back.
Hey, everyone, thank you so much. Appreciate all the work that's gone into this again. And again, kudos to Toby Turner. I forgot to mention that earlier. I would like to direct your attention to a couple of things. When WIS put together, the average, the market average on commissioners, they came up with $64,463 per year. It's not something I thought I'd have to do to come back here and remind council that in 2020, we received an increase which we're grateful for, but we were told that was a down payment. And if, if you think that our job is a pat D, I would like to hear about that. That's not something that I've seen discussed at a public meeting and I'm really curious about that. We are the executive and legislative branch for county government. And we should be an EXE A on this grid. I will speak up for us because no one else is. And we work full-time and we work more than full-time when there are emergencies, anything from tornadoes to events that last like COVID for more than 20 months. We have put in a lot of hours because that's our job and we love our jobs and we love to do this work. But to expect us to not be compensated fairly for more than a full-time job is really surprising and really sad. And I would hope that you would reconsider where we've been put on the grid. Because we are full-time, more than full-time employees and we are at the ready serving every county resident and every county employee and we're running a lot of county department, departments through our office as well. There's a lot of work to do. We meet every week, which is probably more than anyone else in state. And we are constantly involved in, in projects and bonds and residential tips and everything in between. And this, this workload is not letting up and it shouldn't let up. Even, even post-pandemic, once we get there, because we do have a criminal justice reform study. And we are part of that. We are part of finding a solution and we appreciate all the work of the county council, but we really hope that you would consider putting us in the correct place on the grid. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Thomas, Ms. Givens.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I was out over the weekend, meeting with constituents. It's part of my job to, to go out, to talk. I don't mind that. In fact, I love meeting with people. But I also think that this is really a very, very full-time job on par with many of the other elected full-time officials. And so I would consider it a recognition of what we do to actually put into place what WIS, what WIS showed you on a very separate grid for what comparable county commissioners make. So I appreciate your consideration tonight and I really do thank you for what you're doing for the county employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Givens. Ms. Hawke, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I think perhaps we should bring forward the amount that we're proposing the commissioners be paying. I mean, I mean, yes, just read it off for the public to hear.
And then what was it last year?
Currently, the current rate that they are receiving is 46,000. The proposed linked grid is 48,886.
Okay, so the, the current was, so that's, and that was just raised by 10,000, so it was 36,000 about a year ago.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If you take, if you take the 2022 proposed that they, that's listed here, the 4886, and you divide it by the top, which is 79,317, it's 61.6%. And then if you did the, I picked the other one because it's higher than the assessor, 69 divided by 133, it's 51.6%. So I'm not sure how WIS got their external ranges.
What are we, what are we discussing here?
The commissioner percentage. The, no, the 22 proposed linked to grid.
So basically.
Turn your mic on.
I'm just trying to clarify a little bit, so I'm not sure what my question is, but what I'm seeing is the external average for commissioner is 37,312.
Correct, that is based on the WIS external salary ranges.
And, and basically, the range though goes from 10,000 something to, to almost 80,000. So really, an average, if we're talking about the mean, is sort of a ridiculous thing to even think about. I mean, with a variance that large.
Right.
Okay, so we probably don't need to even talk about the 37,000. I mean, I, I don't want to just flat out ignore something if people are into it, but.
I think the median is probably.
I agree, it's kind of, it's worthless.
Okay. So column C for them is not what we need. So then we've got the median, that's the 44, am I? Yes.
Yep, so it's about 10% above the median that proposed.
Which is a better way to look at it.
Now, I can pull up the report, I think what Counselor or Commissioner Thomas was referring to.
I think if there's any other questions or discussion, let that, let us know, but I'm, I'm ready to vote if we're, if we're all set here.
I agree.
Questions? Okay, do we have any, well, we've done public comments, so I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Ms. Miller.
Councilor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councilor Iverson.
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore.
Yes.
Councilor Hawke.
Yes.
Councilor Duckard.
Yes.
Councilor McKem.
Yes.
Councilor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very good, and that will take care of item 5B. We'll now move on to item 5C.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval, the job classification and compensation maintenance plan with an effective date of January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Rice and Michelle.
Yeah, so I'll lead with this and then Kim can fill in as she deems appropriate. So the job classification and compensation maintenance plan is in the packet. I think it's about pages 110 to 115. It's not really new material. This is the kind of maintenance plan we've had in place for many years while we've had the WIS plan. The difference, I think, is that Wagner Irwin Shealy emphasized in their recommendations in their report, their summary report to the council is that, and I'll read from the recommendation, it's strongly recommended that the county council adopt, implement, and strictly enforce a job classification maintenance plan going forward. The county council needs to take ownership of the job classification and compensation system. Not doing so will result in a continuing, a pattern of conducting new. Not doing so will result in continuing a pattern of conducting new job class studies to correct classification and compensation discrepancies that were brought on by a selective maintenance system. And this is what council member Deckard was talking about earlier. Many of you have mentioned it already. And one thing I want to emphasize is that we have put something in place in the personnel policy to help out in this regard, which is a form that employees fill out every year at the beginning of the year. And Brian Gregory, the auditor's office, is, they're also responsible for helping to collect these forms and make sure that from an internal sort of auditing perspective that we're following it, which is every employee fills out information to say, yes, my information is accurate. I have read my job description and I understand it. And so that if later we come back and hear stories, which we have heard before, which is, gosh, that job description is, I haven't even been doing that for like the last four years. Are you kidding me? The answer is, well, then why did you say on this form that you read your job description and it's accurate? So the idea is not that we want to put an arbitrary process in place or we want to make things difficult for employees or supervisors who need or want to change job descriptions. It is, it is not a means without an end. The end goal is that we keep job descriptions accurate, that the expectations for employees are clear, that we can hold them accountable to those expectations and not ask them to do something that is not within their job description. You simply cannot have a system that is supposed to be owned by the council and have employees and supervisors changing that system or changing job descriptions and job duties in the field without the permission and the consent of the council. So one of the things that WIS said is that they found instances of positions classified at different classification levels, and there were no reclassification records or documentation in the county council's meeting minutes. They found instances of job titles that were changed internally by the department or as well as job requirement changes made that did not go through the council. So that will be not allowed in the future because this will be strictly enforced. And Kim might want to talk a little bit about that. You know, PAC, I know, will be sort of keeping an eye on this as well. But the idea is that the most fair way to treat our employees is to treat them equally and to make everybody adhere to the same sort of system that is known and, and regularly inconsistently followed.
And if this council passes this, my, my goal is to share this document with all the department heads and the financial managers that deal with the job descriptions and, you know, the employees, and just to let them know, hey, this is what we're doing moving forward. If you see that there is something that needs to be changed, this is the process. And so that there will be process and procedures that will be a little bit more, just like a step-by-step kind of thing, saying, so if you need to do this, do this, you know? Kind of, you know, that way they don't have to research the maintenance plan the entire time, but to help, you know, help them out as best as I can. And that way, if anybody has any questions or concerns with regards to making changes or updates, it has to start with the council office.
Can I add one small thing? My suggestion was years ago, and it is again this time with the Swiss, is that when the council votes on a job description moving forward from this day forward, once it's adopted, moving, moving forward, that added to the job description at the very bottom is the latest date of the council meeting where the new job description was adopted. So you accumulate it. If it's changed three times in 10 years, you have three numbers, three dates down there. So that if ever, anybody ever wants to go back and track what happened with that, it's right on that job description.
And my goal, because once these are approved, account departments were given drafts of the WIS job descriptions. And my goal is that when they receive these, there will be the date, which will say council approved with this date down in the footer.
Great.
Okay. Comments from council? Okay, anything further from council? Mr. Kim?
Yeah, just a question. The, is this the Subcommittee on Compensation, is this to replace PAC?
No, it's PAC. Three members of that council and then staff that serves is, is Kim's position, the auditor's position. We did ask WIS about that. The fact that, you know, we have PAC, which is a three-member council body. And the thought is that we would continue with that and just recognize these non-voting staff members being auditor and the council administrator that serve.
Okay, okay, but it is the same.
Yeah, it's the same.
Right.
We're not creating another body.
No, no, it's the same.
They use Subcommittee, they use the term Subcommittee where we use the, the term PAC.
No, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Hawk?
Yes, having served on PAC and, and many times while I wasn't serving on PAC, there was times that PAC sort of lost the way. They sort of like allowed changes to be made midstream and thinking that we had to implement the salary rate there. And there's rules that, that we are supposed to be following. So that we're looking at the changes in job descriptions, so we have all that information before we ever go into budget hearings, so that we know what we need to plan and prepare for, for the following year. So it's essential that those members who serve on PAC will remember what the rules are and don't go around the rules. And simply because there are spokes that we like, they know we, it's hard to say no to people we really care for, but we have to make sure we treat everyone exactly the same according to the rules.
In the time period that Ms. Hawk is talking about, it says that requests shall be made during the months of February through April of each calendar year, so that you have the information well ahead of budget time.
And I requested February through April and, and that's what they put in. And I, because January, we don't normally have PAC meetings. April, then, if we have a PAC meeting in April, we should have things back from WIS you know, July, you know, at the latest. And so that way, if anything comes after the April me, PAC meetings and council meetings, unless it's a, an absolute emergency, you know, that kind of thing, those job descriptions then won't be considered until the following year because they will not be included in the budget process. And that's why we chose the February through April dates with regards to any changes.
Got it. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Wiltz?
I have not served on PAC, and so this might just be my ignorance. But when you put together the procedures that department heads should be following, is, will there be an accompanying procedure for PAC members so that perhaps since we rotate through, that we have something that says, okay, PAC, these. And I know we've got your institutional knowledge, but I just feel like we come and go.
I've been working on creating a procedures manual, and I've got like the additionals. I've got council requests and that kind of thing. PAC is one of them that I hadn't completed because we were in this process. So when we get this done, there will be a, what I would call the council handbook, whatever, you know, with, with regards to procedures. And so that way, you will have access to it as well as department heads.
Ms. Rice, there's some, there is some existing PAC procedures, right? They kind of outline all of the scenarios that PAC would, would consider.
Yeah, they're very similar to what we have. These have been updated a little bit, but yes, there are. And they are available on, as shared drives are available, the departments can access them. And we can certainly make sure that they're in a place for you guys to, to access.
Anything? Yes, Ms. Hawk?
Just to share with you, the procedures for PAC is something that WIS suggested from the very beginning. Let's see, that was back in 19, what? 19, no, well, was it 1991? It's 90s when we first started working with them. But that was a procedure that we need to just continue to follow. It was the correct procedure. So that we were prepared and nobody throwing things at us at the last minute in the middle of budget hearings.
Correct. And, you know, and that's why I want to make sure that whatever procedures that we kind of put, put in place, I mean, this is the outline. And I just want to kind of make it a little simpler for everyone to follow. But then that way, everybody has the same information. They'll have it accessed in the council or PAC members will also have that same information as well.
I do want to point out that after we adopted the first WIS study and did not implement it, we hired an HR manager and that HR manager was tasked with doing the work that WIS did. So it bastardized the system. That's what, exactly what happened. And in addition to that, it was sometimes they wanted her to do that, and sometimes they didn't want her to do that, depending on who sat on PAC. What we've done now is right-size the PAC compensation. And now we're, we're, we're streamlining the process. So it will have clear written instructions, and I believe that's really the question that you guys have. It is not our intention to ever bastardize this. Once we get it fully adopted, we want to embrace it as the model and keep it pure and keep it simple and keep it following the rules.
Yes.
Okay. All right. If there's, if there's nothing further from council, we'll see if there's any public comment. See any public comments? So we'll take roll call. Go please.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Hawk?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor McKem?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 5D.
Council, I move to open for discussion and approval, a temporary moratorium on all job description changes as per a recommendation of Wagner Irwin and Shealy to begin January 1, 2022 through and including December 31, 2022.
Second.
All right, Michelle and Ms. Rice tell us about this one.
Yes, and I'll start. So Wagner Irwin Shealy recommended, since everybody will have up-to-date, accurate job descriptions, that there should not be a need for changes for first year. And then you might want to give yourselves a break and everybody else a break and implement a moratorium so that through 2022, changes will not be made to job descriptions. When I asked them if there were, would be any reasonable exceptions to that rule, they issued a memo, which I sent to you today.
And I, and I can post that on the screen.
And, and they list essentially five exceptions. If there was a new position that was proposed that's not currently in the system or a grant-funded position that is not currently in the system. If there is a department restructure, they say, due to a new elected official coming into place, vacancies in certain hard-to-fill positions, such as public safety or some other essential function where you're having difficulty hiring and something needs to be tweaked, or other minimal changes to job descriptions that would not affect the current classification. And this is a non-exclusive list, but title changes, equipment changes, job duty clarifications that don't require like additional knowledge or education. This could even report, I could see reporting structures or other changes, the things that are not going to change the salary, change the classification. So this is something for you to consider if you would like to put in place a moratorium. And if you do, what exceptions, if any, you want to put in place. This is completely within your discretion. If you want to have a moratorium, and if you do want to have a moratorium, what exceptions?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hawk, did you have a question or comment?
Comment? At first blush, it sounds like a really good idea because seems like there's always a rush after we do something like this for people to kind of say, okay, we want to change. But we also have to remember, because of the way PAC works, if we say we're not going to accept any changes other than some other whatever, and we probably shouldn't even spell out exactly. We probably should just say, at our discretion or something, because we don't want to lock ourselves into not being able to act in the county's best interest. But just as a reminder, if we say we're not going to hear any in 2022, that means that there will be no change if we're 2023, because we have to have it in time for budget hearings before we have our budget hearings 2023. So if we all understand, we're going to just stay in lockstep between 2022 and 2023. So the first time you have any salary changes will be 2024. Of course, you could always have changes to do with COLA or something, but. So at first, like I said, at first blush, I thought, yes, this makes a lot of sense. And then the more I thought of it, I thought, I don't know. So, but what if someone came and said they've, have decided there's some way to do a reorganization that might save the county money or work their department better, whatever. And that's part of what they come to the PAC for. So whatever, just thought.
Yeah. Ms. Kim?
Yeah. We always have the ability, I mean, if we pass a policy, we always have the ability to waive it as well. And I, you know, I guess I kind of agree that with Councillor Hawk, that we probably don't want to enumerate the specific list of exceptions. I think we want to keep it flexible for ourselves. And I mean, this, this memo was very useful, I think. Helps us understand what, you know, what the range of, of likely exceptions might be. But I think the overall purpose of this policy is, is a good one, and it is important. I mean, that, that we've spent so much time getting these job descriptions right, that what, what we don't want is for a bunch of additional changes that resulted reclassifications that, whose purpose is primarily to get people extra salary. That's just, that's, that's exactly what we want to get away from. That's exactly what our compensation is falling victim to, that the only way to get people additional salary is, is to change a job description and get it reclassified. So I, I, I like the idea of just, we pass the policy and let's, let's let it sit for a while. If there's something that's truly in the best interest of the county, we can waive it ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Ms. Munson?
So I'm glad that these waivers can be considered because I was concerned about new grant opportunities that would require new, new types of positions, et cetera.
Like Ms. Munson, Mr. Deckard?
I also kind of want to echo what Councillor Munson is saying. I'm happy with these exemptions that are listed, and I also recognize that there can be other situations. I mean, good heavens, we are still in a pandemic, but there can be other situations that come up. And I, I think in those cases, council can consider that and make decisions much like they do when you're in a pandemic. You know, we, we do work around those things, those needs in extraneous times and, and other things. When I first heard WIS talk about the moratorium, I did get a little concerned because while classifications in a perfect world could set for a year, I know that things do come up, such as what are listed here. And I think that this does reflect some common sense that often you see in county government. You have a lot of moving parts, a lot of things going on. And, and the perfect can sometimes be a little bit hard to get to. But the, what you can do is appropriate. Thank you.
Ms. Deckard? Anything further from council? So, and I'm not seeing any motions to modify anything here, so we'll vote as originally intended. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Was that pass?
You're not. You weren't on. You need to...
Oh, sorry, I said yes.
Yes. Councilor McHem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and that will conclude item five D. We'll now move on to item five E.
Council, I move to open for discussion the proposed twenty twenty-two county council meeting schedule.
Second. All right. Let's hear about this one.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen one more time. I sent this out to council members a couple of weeks ago, maybe, I think. This is a proposed calendar for twenty twenty-two. At the, at the time, um, we have, we currently have the meetings as always as the second Tuesday of the month is regular session. The fourth Tuesday of the month is work sessions. PAC meetings are then scheduled for the first Tuesday of the month. So with, and we also have, I've received the holiday, the election calendar. So with plotting out the schedule, we have some conflicts as we get down into November and December. And that's where I would like some clarification from the council as how to move forward. In November, November the eighth is an election day. And so we're recommending, because it's an election day and we will have several members of council, you know, working toward being reelected, it was suggested that we move the council meeting to November the third or November fifteenth, which is the third Tuesday of that month. And then because of the holiday Thanksgiving week is, would be the fourth Tuesday to move the work session then to the fifth Tuesday of the month. So I just need, you know, some clarification. This is not to get a vote for tonight. This is just to see how you guys would like to see your calendar. And then I'm looking at bringing it to the council for a final vote in December. The next conflict you'll see is the December work session falls between the Christmas and New Year's break week. And so I'm moving the work session to the third Wednesday of the month, which would be the twentieth. So...
Got it. Does anybody, does this cause any immediate concerns with anyone? I think this makes a lot of sense, but I won't be there for these meetings, so if any, if anybody has any concerns with it.
I do have a recommendation. I recommend that you cancel the, the PAC meeting in December, and you make the meetings on the sixth and the twentieth. Because the budget will be put to bed, we will not be, hopefully PAC's going to stabilize or WIS is going to stabilize the PAC environment. And unless it's just, you know, I just can't even imagine we would need a PAC meeting in December, and then that takes away, you know, those sacred days at the end of the month. And don't, and it makes you not have a back-to-back week of meetings.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Iverson, did you have your hand up there?
I did. Thank you for the recognition. First of all, this, the colors are fantastic. This is quite the schedule, so thank you for including colors. And my question is, on October the eleventh, we would have a budget session and a regular session. Is that correct?
Okay, with regards to that, with budgets, when we do our budget work sessions, and that's where the departments come and present their, their budgets, that is being proposed just the same as this, this past year, which would be five days in September. I did move those budget sessions instead of, this year we did Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I would like to have a longer break, so do a Wednesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And that way, if there's anything that happened the following, the, the week before, which is the seventh and eighth, then I'm not rushing or having to get things prepared for a Monday meeting. So then, following that schedule, we have to advertise on the twenty-first. So counting ten days from the twenty-first, you have to have your public hearing. So that moves that to the fourth. Ten days from the fourth, you have to have your adoption, which is the eighteenth. We are not required to have a first reading of the budget. That is something that council does. It gives you an opportunity to review what's in there. And then, so I double-checked with DLGF as well as state word of accounts. We can do our first reading anytime we'd like. So I was thinking we could do it in conjunction with our regular meeting on the October the eleventh. And that way, if there are any changes that you are proposing before the final adoption, that gives us a few more days instead of like the night before, the day before kind of thing. So I, that's why it's kind of a split day, so that would end up being the first reading of all of the budgets and, which would be the Monroe County, the Monroe Fire Protection as well as the Monroe Solid Waste District. And then we can just go ahead then with our regular scheduled meeting. So that's why that, you kind of see that half schedule there.
Okay, so I think what I'll ask, just in the interest of time, because I know we've still got a lot of
We've really important items here.
Everyone think about this, take those suggestions into account, and please get your feedback to Michelle as quickly as possible so she can get this prepared for the December regular session meeting and a vote on the, the council calendar for two thousand twenty-two. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to item six.
Council, I move to approve the commissioner's request to amend the twenty twenty-two salary ordinance, ordinance notes, section G, Monroe County Health Incentive Programs Wellness Benefit Incentive Program.
Second. All right. Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Thank you again. So yeah, so this first section here is we are wanting to change the name. Activate Our Health Clinic has changed their name from Activate to Everside. So there's a need to make that correction in the notes section of your salary ordinance, actually. And also, this went into effect, I actually believe it was a couple of years ago, where we reduced the amount that can be, can be earned by having your, your physical. And so the, but the change would be that we're proposing that the new language read Everside program, one hundred and fifty dollars annually for an employee and spouse, domestic partner.
Okay, is that all? Do we have any questions from council, from Ms. Purdy? This request? All right, so do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
All right, let's take a vote on it.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor McHem?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, and next we'll move on to item six B.
Council, I move to approve the commissioner's request to amend the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two salary ordinances, ordinance notes, section G, Monroe County Health Incentive Programs, and add COVID-nineteen incentive program.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. A second. Ms. Purdy, tell us about this one.
Okay, this proposal that's coming to you is a result of wanting to incentivize the COVID-nineteen vaccination for our employees, both full-time and part-time. And also to help us get in preparation for, it's currently stayed, last time I checked, stayed the federal OSHA vaccination ruling. And so this would be a, a more of a spoonful of sugar approach to requiring this, this vaccination process for our, for our employees. And so the idea is that council would approve all full-time employees in twenty twenty-one to receive one thousand dollars upon verification of their vaccination. It would either be the two vaccines by Pfizer or Moderna or the one vaccine from J and J. It's also proposing that part-time employees upon submission of verification of their vaccination status, they would get five hundred dollars. This will be, the proposal is that people who've already got their vaccinations, they just need to provide their certificate, and they would be eligible for the, for the thousand dollars or five hundred. And then the subsequent part is that for the, for our employees who have not initiated their vaccination, vaccination process, the likelihood of being able to get everything done in time before the holidays and all people start leaving and going, won't be able to process the, the claims. They'll still be able to get their vaccination, and they would have a nice bonus in Ja, in January. So that's the basic premise of this. Twenty twenty-two is no different with the exception of it allows the electeds. And this might become more of a legal question, but my understanding is that the elected's compensation cannot change within a year. And even though this is an incentive, which I was trying to play war games, but I wasn't allowed to do that, it's still considered a compensation. So electeds would just have to wait until the twenty twenty-two goes into effect.
Yeah.
Yeah. So kind of talk through the accounting of this. It's intended to be paid through the health insurance reserves first, and then it'll be replenished with ARPA funding, right?
That is correct, and I did speak with our auditor earlier today, and she said that that's an acceptable process for us to use. We do a correction. And the other communities, counties around the state are doing that themselves.
Yep. And Ms. Rice, you, I think we're all aware of this, but just for the public, this is a totally acceptable use of ARPA funding to, to pay for, for this type of incentive, right?
Yes, it is.
Got it. So I'm, I'm really very much in favor of this. I think it's, it's exactly used for the intended purpose of ARPA funding. It's a great way that our employees can get some extra money relatively easily. I think it's a very attractive incentive, and I would encourage all of our, if this does pass, would encourage all of our employees to take full advantage of this, not only this year, but next year. And so I'm glad that, you know, I kind of advocated for this earlier months ago and glad that it's got to this point now. So thanks for bringing it to us. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes. Yeah, so just, I'm sorry, what's, what would be the approximate maximum exposure on this? Like how many, how many full-time and how many part-time would be the?
Yes, I want to say five hundred and sixty-six or six hundred for full-time and about two fifty part-time. That's just off the top of my head.
You said five hundred and sixty-six?
Yeah.
Approximately?
Yeah, that's, I was using that for looking at our
Be under a million.
Insurance, yeah, be under.
Five sixty-six. And then, I'm sorry, and how, and how many approximate part-time? I know that's kind of hard to calculate.
Yeah. And again, that's just from my memory of having a quick look at our personnel.
Excuse me, council, I do want to mention that we are self-insured for the public so that they understand. So one major hospitalization of someone on a ventilator could easily cost more than this whole, this whole incentive program. So there's a couple of different ways to look at it, is we could be possibly saving ourselves money and not only protecting ourselves. So I, I did want to mention it in a financial manner so that you understand there's two parts to this coin.
Ms. McKim, did you have any additional?
No. Okay, just doing the math, sorry.
Ms. Wiltz?
I understand that we can use ARPA funds for this. What, I'm, I'm wondering though, what is the, how much money is in the health reserve fund? Do we?
There's, there's plenty of money to cover this, and what we're going to do is do a correction. And there's different ways that the state word of accounts allows us to use that ARPA money. The other count, many other counties have already done this and also give people just COVID money for working. And this, there's an incentive line already in this budget, so this just makes the most sense on how to do it this way. Okay.
But the fund itself is, is flush right now.
Yes, there's over two billion dollars currently in that particular.
In this, doing this, paying for it out of the reserve, health insurance reserve fund wouldn't put us at any risk of not being able to meet other obligations before we get the replenishment of ARPA funding.
Yeah, and I also would like just, for clarification purposes, the reason why we would use our self-insurance fund is we already have a line for incentives. And in order to use the ARPA funds, we would have to have this added to our policy, and then you guys would also have to approve that policy and make the appropriation. So in an attempt to reward our employees faster, we opted for the self-insurance to begin with.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes, Ms. Purdy, thank you for being here and explaining this program. Do we have a sense of the number or percentage of county employees that are not vaccinated?
No, I know that three hundred and forty-seven members within our health plans have been vaccinated. There's like a thousand and seventy-six, again, just pulling numbers of overall members in the plan. Those are people also who are specific to, in our health plan, so those employees who have other health plans. We don't have their information. Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Michelle?
The fund, the self-insurance fund currently has a balance of two million four hundred and eighty-five thousand.
All right, anything further? Have any public comment? All right.
There's no public comment.
No public comment. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilor McHem?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, we'll now move on to item seven.
May I, just for our department heads who might be paying attention, I spoke with Ms. Sessenstein earlier today, and what we decided is that the best way for people to submit these requests or is to use the payroll voucher. So the department head or the financial manager at each department, however, whoever's doing the payroll would use a payroll would use a payroll voucher, attach the certificates, and Ms. Szentstein's already either sent it out or prepared to send out a how-to-get-that-certificates from the Indiana State website. So, we don't want her to be inundated with emails with certificates of vaccination. So, we'd like it to go through the payroll process and just attach it to the voucher. That's what I wanted to share.
I had, to that point, I just had a clarifying question. You are accepting the printouts from the state. Are we accepting the handwritten cards, or do we need to go to the state to do it?
I think that to make it easier, and I think it's just going to be better to use a certificate. It's very easy to obtain from the state's website. And when you get the certificate, it doesn't tell you anybody what vaccine you received, or, you know, when you had it. It just says that you are vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, if that's your preference, that that's what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hawk?
Just want to make sure I understood, why can't they just use the card?
Well, the thinking is, is that when people start using different means of verification, it makes it harder to track, it makes it harder to, you're looking at different, obviously, you know, pieces of paper, but the other thing that was the issue is concern for fraudulent documents. So, if we require it from the state, then we know what it's supposed to look like, it's got the state's feel. It really is not hard to do.
It just takes five minutes to print it out.
I had to, I had to do it to get my booster because I lost my card, and it was very easy to do. And I, it is a consistent approach, but I think, you know, you all can decide what is the best.
I think if somebody was really having a problem, then obviously accommodations would be made.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions or comments? I want to make sure that we're moving along here. Okay, if none, we will move on to item seven, our prosecutor's office. Oh, yes, and we've, and this will be item seven A. We're going to hear first a an update from Prosecutor Oliphant and Dr. Grauman on the Racial Justice Data Project. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Erica Oliphant, Monroe County Prosecuting Attorney. I'm hopeful to be brief because I know you have a big agenda tonight, but I first want to say that I'm going to miss President Spoonmore as our liaison. He's always been very attentive, supportive, just a great representation for my office and for the council. So, thank you for your service, and I look forward to seeing your successes in your new role. All right, so as you know, the council approved an additional $68,000 appropriation earlier this year to allow my office to contract with Indiana University's Public Policy Institute to study racial and ethnic disparities due to prosecutorial decision-making here in Monroe County. And I am happy to report that since that time, Dr. Eric Grauman and his research team have been working diligently on this project. We've spent a lot of time together in my office, where his researchers are often in processing our files, and he's been in constant communication with updates. So, I've been very happy with working with him. I just want to give a brief update on the progress of the study. You should have received a written memorandum from Dr. Grauman from November 16th. I'll just hit some of the highlights. The research team completed voluntary interviews of my staff to capture perceptions about disparities in the justice system, justice system priorities, use of discretion, and data use and availability. Thirty-three percent of those who were asked to participate did so, and we anticipate that there will be a detailed explanation of the interview results included as a chapter in the final product, the report that we get at the end of the study. We've launched a survey to capture perceptions about racial and ethnic disparities in the justice system, priorities, prosecution preferences, use of discretion, and data availability and use. And for that survey, we recruited a broad sample of stakeholders, including law enforcement, government officials, judges, community organizations, victims of crime, diversion participants, defense counsel, community corrections and probation. It's probably not an exhaustive list. As of the memorandum, we had received 145 respondents, but Dr. Grauman just told me we're up to about 162 respondents. And many of those are people from the community or community organizations. The survey will be open until the end of the year, so if you'd like an opportunity to participate in that survey and have not done so, please reach out, I'll be happy to share that with you. Dr. Grauman and his team have completed several data polls from the Indiana Prosecutor Case Management System with some assistance from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council and BC Forward, which is the vendor for the case management system. The researchers are working to synthesize the data of, from approximately 10,000 cases, and the cases are being tracked from charging decision to the final resolution of the case, looking at critical decision-making points such as charging, plea offers, sentencing, bail, those kinds of things. The researchers have been on-site most Thursdays and Fridays to complete physical file reviews of a sample of over 500 cases, and they completed that process on November 12th. This review is capturing data points that aren't included in our case management software. We tried to oversample, I say we, it wasn't me, it was the research team. They oversampled filed charges that disproportionately involve black or Latino defendants, try to get a feel for what information was used and present in the file. During this process, Dr. Grauman identified an opportunity to apply for a grant through Arnold Ventures to potentially fund a dramatic expansion of this project to look into a bigger variety of cases, including even traffic stops and infractions, and also to help us build some of our dashboards and tracking that we're hoping to provide to the public, our public-facing information. For that, we applied for a grant, we're still waiting to hear back, we're expecting first quarter of '22 to hear back, but we did reach out to the Monroe County branch in double ACP as a community partner in that, and they agreed to do that with us. Our final report in this study is due July of 2022, and we're on track to complete that at that time. We did initially ask for $10,000 of the appropriation for bulk data calls, but we don't actually need that money. So, happy to report that we're coming in under budget and going to return some money to the County General Fund. So, thank you so much for your time and for your interest in this project. If you have any questions, Dr. Grauman is here with me, and we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Great, thank you for the update, and let's see if we do have any questions for you. I know the council will be very much looking forward to that final report, and good to hear that things are coming in under budget, always, always like to hear that, very good. And we'll keep you posted if there are any, any update or questions that come up along the way, too.
Absolutely, let us know.
And, okay, so that will finalize seven A, let's move on to seven B.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for an additional appropriation and simultaneously amend the 2022 salary ordinance and fund eight one two three dash nine six two two stop grant in the amount of $100,643.23 in the personnel category as set out in the agenda.
Second. Okay, Ms. Oliphant?
Oh, I think I'll be speaking to that.
All right, hello, Ms. Hamlin?
Hi. This is the renewed funding for our stop grant that pays a portion of, it pays about 50% of the salary and benefits for a sex crime deputy prosecuting attorney and a domestic violence specialist deputy prosecuting attorney. It also pays some part-time hours for an assistant to this special victims unit. The grant period runs from October 1st of 2021 through September 30th of 2022. The total match required is $33,552.86, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that information. Let's see if we have any questions. Any comments? Doesn't look like we do. We'll see if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good night.
All right, item eight, the Technical Services Department is next.
Counsel, I move to approve the Technical Services Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund two five zero two dash zero 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 cable franchise in the amount of $64,000 in the services category.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Welcome back.
Hello again. I'm actually just going to start this off and then hand it off to Mr. Evans, who's in the So, this is just a request for an additional 64,000, I shouldn't say just, and requesting that that come from the Cable Franchise User Fee Fund. I will let Mr. Evans speak more.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, this is the disembodied voice of your chief technology officer.
All right.
Please transfer more money into my account. So, yeah, this is the result of the ever-changing landscape of cellular phone usage here at the county. Again, as we've recovered from the pandemic, there's been more people that are working from home and flexing schedules. So, there's been more iPads and iPhones in hotspots distributed. Additionally, we've gotten a bunch of new iPads for several different departments as part of our new Open Gov licensing and permit software. So, you know, basically, our monthly recurring on that has just really gone up because we're using it more. The actual per-unit cost is actually the same, actually, it's lower than it was two years ago.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that information. Let's see if we have any questions or discussion on this request. Counsel, anything? All right, let's see if we have any public comment. All right, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, that will conclude item eight, and we'll now move on to our public defender, item nine.
Counsel, I move to approve the public defender's request for a midpoint hire of an investigator position in Fund one two zero zero dash zero 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 Public Defender Supplemental and of an investigator position in Fund nine one six zero dash zero 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 System Navigator Grant. And to simultaneously amend the 2021 and 2022 salary ordinances, account lines one zero zero six five and one three zero one six investigator forty hours, Civ Paul, non-exempt to midpoint hire status.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Hunt and Ms. Stufel are joining us for this request. Welcome.
Hello.
Let me start. I was not here for a couple of sessions where Ms. Stufel presented about the new grant we have. And what we're asking for is, we have a couple of, one for an investigator position and one for the new grant position that we believe warrant midpoint hire. And I will let her explain, since she's been in on the ground floor, any details she might have. Heather?
So, short and sweet. Excuse me, we selected the two candidates, one for the current open position that we have and one for the grant investigator. And they both have, do you want me to do it separately, or would you rather just combine the two?
I think combine, yeah, combining.
Okay, so, both of them have several years of experience and are more than qualified. And we, what we request that they hire in at midpoint to be compensated for their experience. So, the 1,200 fund position, that's the open position that we're just filling. It will not require an additional appropriation, that fund is already, or that line is already funded for a 14-year person, so the county will get some money back on that one. And the other is 100% reimbursable by the state through the grant.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that information. Let's see if we have any questions or discussion on this. Counsel? Mr. Kim?
Yeah, when you say several years' experience, what does that actually come out to? Because the requirement for midpoint would be three years.
Yes, so, the 1,200 position is five years' experience, and the grant position is 25 years.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Several.
Several.
Multiple several. Anything further from counsel on this request? Let's see if we have any public comment. Doesn't appear that we have any public comments, so we'll, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
And I can.
She must have stepped away, so just a moment. Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes item nine. We'll now move on to item 10, boards and commissions. So, we've got a couple of, a few things here. We've received a couple of resignations very recently, so I want to acknowledge that we've received the resignation of Miriam Northcutt Bommer from the Women's Commission, as well as Kristi Langley from the Redevelopment Commission. So, those have been received. In addition, I would, I have a nomination to make for the replacement of Kristi Langley's role on the RDC, and we've received a, we had an application on file from Colin McCarty. I have spoken with Mr. McCarty, he's very interested in serving on the Redevelopment Commission. I think he would be a terrific fit for that role, and so I would like to nominate Mr. McCarty to serve on the recently vacated Redevelopment Commission with a term date of January 1st, 2022.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? On the appointment, yes?
I'd just like to say that we did speak with him a while ago, a year ago, and he's very impressive, and I fully support his appointment.
Yeah, very much.
Mr. Deckard?
I would just briefly say, I'm grateful to Ms. Langley for serving and Mr. McCarty for coming on. He, of course, his family, huge civic supporters, and we're all about that here at the county. So, great, grateful for his service.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Anything further from counsel? All right.
I'm just grateful that he is willing to take his time, which is very, has a very full plate, but I know he'll do a great job. He loves this community. His heart is here, his family's here, and this is where he was raised, his mother was raised, his grandfather, and so forth. So we are just blessed to have people like that in this community who are willing to give back in service.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. All right, is there any public comment on the nomination to the Redevelopment Commission? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to accept it.
I'll do that for you, please. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, congratulations to Ms. McCarty and thank you to Ms. Langley for her service on Redevelopment Commission. And that will conclude item ten. We'll now move on to, oh, I'm sorry, I am sorry. Do we have any further items?
I, Mr. President, if we could, I, I would like to make a nomination for a member to fill out what will become your expired term on the PAC committee. When you're leaving council, you're also leaving PAC, which is our, our lesser-known little, little brother or sister. And so to do that, I was grateful to talk with Counselor Iverson, and he would be willing to serve in that role if the council finds that acceptable. And so I'll nominate Peter Iverson for a seat on PAC for the remaining portion of two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
No ways can I fail Counselor Spoonmore's shoes. So.
Yeah, well, Mr. Iverson, and thank you for your willingness to serve in this very important role. It'll be a great experience serving on PAC for sure. Okay, any, any public comment on the nomination? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
I will do that for you. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
And Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
A big congratulations to Mr. Iverson on that appointment. Okay.
One month.
And up next is approval of minutes as presented. So we have three sets of minutes here, one from September twenty-eighth. The work session, October twelfth, the regular session, October twenty-sixth, the work session. Do we have any council members who would like to change or modify? Have edited these minutes. Seeing none, the minutes are accepted.
As presented.
As presented. Okay, and next here is council comments, item twelve. Any council members who would like to make closing comments before we adjourn tonight?
Mr. Kim? Not, not long. I just want to congratulate this, you, Mr. Spoonmore, for all, thank you for all of your service. It's been an honor serving with you. I've learned a lot and I look forward to working with you on the the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I'm excited for you and your future endeavors here. I know it's gonna be a great time for you and for your family and for this community. And so I appreciate your service here on the County Council and your service is greatly needed there on the chamber as well as we continue to try to grow our jobs and our, and trade our businesses as well. Because without jobs, without our businesses to support this county and the people who live here, this would be a sad day indeed. So appreciate your service.
Thank you.
So I would like to say thank you to Eric and to add one thing. I think County Council is very good preparation for leading the Chamber of Commerce.
I want to join in with the thanks to Counselor Spoonmore, Mr. President, as you wrap up. It is, to serve with you is, is an absolute pleasure. I suspect more than just me come running to you with our proverbial heads cut off and yelling and screaming, and that's just council. I can only imagine the others that come to you. And you are one of the most even-killed leaders I have ever watched up close. You don't panic and you don't yell and scream with us as much as sometimes we do, and that is remarkable. And that's why the Bloomington Chamber is lucky to have you, and we are all so grateful for that even-kiltedness and that just you're a remarkable friend beyond that in public service, and it's not always easy in these jobs. But you make it just, you make it such a pleasure to serve. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Counselor Iverson?
Mr. Iverson?
I gotta, I gotta jump in here, too. I wanna, I wanna use my time to share a recollection that I have. As, as I was getting involved in civic affairs, Mr. Spoonmore and I served on the Environmental Commission together, and we used to have extended chats outside of the courthouse, and I remember him being very passionate about a specific gas station in town and wanting to make the lives of those living around that, that facility even better. And I remember thinking, wow, that's, that's exactly what we need in a local politician, a, a local civil civic servant. And so, Mr. Spoonmore, it's, it's been a pleasure to serve alongside you in this body, and I know you're gonna do great as you move on.
Thank you very much.
I get to go now. Well, even though you duped me into becoming your pro tem, I've forgiven you and I've, I've really valued having you, Eric, as a supporter, as a colleague and as a friend. And I've learned a lot from watching you lead this body and watching you work on council. And I know I speak for many of people in this room and elsewhere when I say that you'll be missed a lot. And so on behalf of your council colleagues, the fellow counselors and the staff, I'm presenting you with, with a plaque as a token of our sincere appreciation for your leadership in county government.
Well, thank you very much. This is, this is just fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awesome. I'm, I'm probably gonna go on a little bit longer here than people would, would want me to, but I probably, this will be the last time you ever have to hear me talk. But it, it's been really nice to be able to sit in this chair and at this dais one last time. And so thanks everyone for giving me that honor tonight. I look forward to when these meetings will be more consistently held in person in this beautiful room here, but understandably, it's gonna take some time before that can happen. So I'm gonna spend the next few minutes here reflecting on some things that made my experience on the County Council particularly special, all due in part to no one individual, but rather through the collaborative work together as a team of dedicated public servants. This council has made tremendous progress on how we compensate county employees. And this meeting tonight is perhaps the most striking example of that during my six years as a member of this body. For me personally, it's particularly gratifying to see all this come together in what will be my last meeting as I conclude my service on the Monroe County Council tonight. There is so much that I am proud of, and I can't begin to list all the ways this group has made a difference for this community. But I would like to take some time to name a few while I still have this microphone in front. In addition to what we accomplished tonight, I'm very proud of the many economic development deals and incentives that we put into place that have supported new job growth and capital investment in Monroe County, especially all the work we did with Cook Group and their spectacular plans for the old G E manufacturing facility on the West Side and countless other projects. Those kinds of things are transformative for the community, and I'm very proud to have made a contribution to those efforts. It will be important that county government continues to prioritize economic development projects as our historically relied upon revenue streams will inevitably evolve over time. I'm also very proud of the investments the county has made in recent years in our public safety operations across the board. The council has consistently made substantial investments in public safety year after year, and that was the right thing to do. Most notably, in my opinion, was back in two thousand and sixteen, when we came together as an entire community, city and county, to pass a small increase to the public safety local income tax, which in turn allowed the county to hire ten new permanent road deputies. That was a huge investment in the safety and well-being of our community, and I still hear today from residents who are thankful that we did that. I could go on and on about the countless major infrastructure projects that have been completed or are currently under construction, including new roads, bridges, roundabouts, trail extensions, connectors, and stormwater improvements. And I have to thank the state of Indiana for all of their partnership with many of these projects through the Community Crossings Brands. We could, we couldn't have done a lot of this work without the help of our friends in the General Assembly. There have been other important capital projects in recent years. In two thousand and nineteen, we approved a major expansion and renovation of the youth services facility and did the entire two and a half million-dollar project without having to borrow a dime. And I think that's a testament to just how fiscally responsible this council has been. Though we've been very intentional with our budgets and ensuring that we have adequate reserves to weather the unpredictable and unforeseen challenges, and assuredly there will be more of those for future councils to respond to. Our years of disciplined fiscal responsibility is a big part of what got us through the worst of the COVID-nineteen crisis. I think, looking back on the last twenty or so months, I'm just so grateful that we made it and that our employees were safe and we didn't have to initiate any layoffs or reductions in force. It was never an option for us. In fact, we believe that now is the time to invest more in our people, as demonstrated unanimously here tonight. And these decisions are made easier knowing that our county is in excellent financial shape. And as the fiscal body, that's our primary job on the council, to be great stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. That's what we are elected by the people to do, and I think that job has been done very well. But you know that the work is never over, and the community needs to always hold these elected positions accountable and demand the very best from our elected officials. I'm just grateful to live in a community that cares about this stuff because that makes a difference. But aside from these many sources of pride that I've listed above, what makes me most proud is my service on this council is the way in which we have consistently worked together, always pulling together through the challenges, even when we don't always agree. This council embodies what teamwork is all about. And I will remember these experiences of serving with each of you with great reverence for the rest of my life. So thank you all for entrusting me to serve as your president for these past two years, and most especially, thank you to the people of Monroe County for allowing me the awesome privilege of serving as one of your elected leaders. I look forward to staying in touch with every one of you, and I wish everyone in Monroe County Government the very best. Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. Oh, yes, we are adjourned.